And Commissioner Kropa is in the back talking to the undersheriff.[66.23][66.23](laughter)
Wait till later to put the cuffs on her, please.
Yes.[72.18][72.18](laughter)
Oh, no, I'd love to see that.[74.18][74.18](laughter)
It's what you buy for Christmas, isn't it?
Exactly.
I am going to start by, I'm going to give the invocation, and it is a prayer that Frank Borman gave. If anyone doesn't remember Frank Borman, and there are some in the audience that are extraordinarily young and in all probability do not know who Frank Borman was, he was from the crew of Apollo 8. And he was one of the few astronauts to circle the moon, or as they used to say, lunar orbit. And he did so on December 24th. And one of the things that he said was, "And from the crew of Apollo 8, we close with good night, good luck, a Merry Christmas, and God bless all of you, all of you on the good earth." But I really like his prayer, and so if we can all rise, please, I will read it. "Give us, oh God, the vision we can see your love in the world in spite of human failure. Give us the faith to trust your goodness in spite of our ignorance and weakness. Give us the knowledge that we may continue to pray with understanding hearts and show us what each one of us can do to set forward the coming of the day of universal peace. Amen."
"I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Bonnie, would you call the roll, please?
Klaus?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Kropa?
Here.
Lathrop?
Yes, ma'am.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Max Power?
Here. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, they will stand approved. This is our first opportunity for public comment. Before we begin public comment, I would like to make a statement, and as chairman, I get to. There has been a great deal of misinformation in the media lately. One of the misinformation emails I received today was from the director of the Cherryland Humane Society. We have notified the Cherryland Humane Society that our contract with them and regarding our animal control is going to be terminated within 60 days. I want to assure everyone that that contract is going to be renewed. One of the things that Mr. Menzel, and he and I spoke today, the director of the Cherryland Humane Society and I have been in email contact, she is traveling. One of the things that we are going to be looking at is not only the present contract, but how to strengthen that contract. We strongly believe that the Cherryland Humane Society is absolutely imperative, instrumental, provides a valuable service in Grand Traverse County, and what we are going to be doing within the next 60 days is we are going to be taking a look at the services that they are providing. And we may be, and I don't know this for a fact, but we may be asking pet owners to pay an increased license fee in order to strengthen that relationship. The other thing that I would like to touch upon is the animal control. It is true that the animal control positions are going to be eliminated, but the service is not, and I want to make that absolutely clear. In Lelandaw County, in Antrim County, in Benzie County, in Wexford County, animal control is handled by the Sheriff's Department. It is unusual to have animal control handled by the Health Department. What we do here presently is abnormal, not normal, not common. And we are, as a board, I know, dedicated to strengthening that, and that's what I'm looking at. And I know our sheriff, who happens to be seated in the audience, is an animal lover, and I know that he has a great relationship with his fellow sheriffs in the surrounding counties, and certainly will look for best practices. And they abound. So with that, I will open up public comment and let Bonnie read the rules, please.
"Any person shall be permitted to address the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioner's questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak."
All right. Would anyone like to make public comment? Mr. Merrick, come on down.
Thank you. Been an interesting couple of days on Facebook, reading all the information going back and forth. I want to take a minute to thank you for making some of the tough decisions. Many of you ran on the platform of change. You knew that you were coming into a structural deficit, somewhere around $3.5 million. From my understanding, the new budget is about a half a million dollars under of a structural deficit, so you corrected about a $3 million issue. Doing that, you're going to step on some people's toes. You're going to make some decisions that are unpopular. Unfortunately, when you took that seat, that's what you decided you were going to do, and I applaud you for that. I hope that you don't change your mind because it might be politically detrimental to your career if you want to be a career politician, or might hurt your able to continue making the difference that you're trying to make in the community. With the animal control, up until about 2012, I thought the Sheriff's Department handled it. In 2012, there was an issue out in Fife Lake with some horses. There was some confusion about who was supposed to handle that issue. Commissioner Wheelock talked about that a couple of times, about the issues of animal control and how things were handled improperly and could be improved. I think this is a great opportunity by shifting it from the Health Department to the Sheriff's Department, giving the Sheriff's Department the additional revenue that's correctly collected from the pet licenses, and getting them the training so that more officers are able to respond. Currently, we have two officers that cover about 40 hours a week. That leaves 128 hours that animal control is not there to respond. You've got a lot of people upset with the decision, a lot of passion about it. I hope that you'll listen to them, and I hope that you'll set up a committee, a Citizens' Advisory Committee, to let these folks who are passionate and are concerned about animals step up and help you make the decisions you need to. You don't all have the expertise in animal control. Maybe some of these folks will be able to help you. I'm going to paraphrase JFK when he said, "Ask not what your county can do for you, but what you can do for your county." I hope that these folks will step up and help you with the decisions that you've had to make, instead of trying to stop any progresses going towards getting our county more fiscally sound. Thank you, and I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Andy, will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Andy Merrick, 2875 East Railroad Avenue, Interlock, Michigan. Thank you.
Please, come on, come on up. And you're welcome to line up if you would like.
Leslie Ray, 304 West 13th Street. If you want to take away, the city and the county boards are the only ones that have insurance in the whole state of Michigan. So if you want to save money, let's cut all your insurance and your family's insurance. And in spite of your intelligence and your ignorance, and the record Eagle and other people come to your county building and wanting to talk to the bosses, maybe they should step forward and have some balls and speak to the people, instead of running out the back door saying, "No, no, tell them I'm not here." And for the sheriff that's in the audience, he throws animal control under the bus a lot with the horses. The one was starved, the other one was dead, there was warrants pulled. Go bury the horse. Tell her to bury the horse and just take the other one. If I did that to my dog, I'd be charged. I won't be buying any more licenses in this county. Oh, and tell Tom Menzel the speed limit is 25 on Pine Street, not 40.
Len Watson, 10460 South Lelandaw Way, Traverse City, 49684. As a recent retiree of Grand Traverse County, in the past 32 years, I've had the opportunity to work with many boards of commissioners. I've found them, for the most part, fiscally responsible, but also compassionate, empathetic, and practical. The bottom line has always been important, of course, but when they're making a decision, the welfare of the people of Grand Traverse County and the employees was always foremost in their minds. I just ask you, as a commission, a Board of Commissioners now, as you're contemplating this and you're getting all kinds of flack from every direction, just to look back and think long and hard, what would my predecessors have done? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Linda Price, 558 Bay East, Traverse City. I can respect and understand what a difficult process it is to balance a budget all too well, and I think everybody is painfully aware of what a sensitive issue this is. I feel like it was done in haste, considering the timing, and respect the other feedback that's already been given, and would encourage you to create a committee. There is a lot of passion behind it, and my concern lies in the timing. I understand the need for change, and I support that, but there seems to be a general lack of knowledge of what's going to happen next, and that's really where my concern lies. A preferred leadership approach for me and my perspective would have been to say, "Hey, this needs to change. We need to make the switch. We're going to look at this." I understand, again, needing to go into 2016 with a balanced budget, but just saying that you've balanced it for the sake of balancing it really doesn't deserve a congratulations without a good plan. I'm not sure if my understanding is correct, but what I've been reading and what I've been told by others is that the Sheriff's Department does not handle calls within the city limits, and I'm not sure if that's accurate. And that's a question I posed to you. Is that an accurate statement?
We don't respond to public comment.
Okay, oh, sorry. Haven't done this in a while. So if anybody in the audience can enlighten me on that, that would be great.
Excuse me, we have public comment, please.
Okay, sorry, sorry, don't mean to raise a ruckus. So if that is the case, I would just ask that, that means two departments have to respond, and I'm curious about what those expenses might be in payroll, in training, and equipment. And so I would be very interested to learn that information and how that really affects the budget decisions that you've made for this department. Other than that, I'm very curious about what's going to happen in the short term while the ramp-up is taking place. How are they going to prioritize the calls to make sure that all interests are concerned, injuries, fire, crime, and animals as well? So I look forward to hearing more of what you're going to do about this in a very responsible and caring manner. Thanks.
Certainly. Please, whoever would like to come, please come.
Deborah Zarafa, and I live at 9750 Bates Road, Williamsburg. And I would like to just briefly share a post that I put on Facebook. And it says, this article, and that is referring to the article that came out on Facebook about Pet Friends Magazine, about what's happening here today. "This article has brought much confusion and speculation to the animal-loving community within Grand Traverse County. It is true, the animal control department was eliminated from the jurisdiction of the Grand Traverse Health Department. It must now be brought back under the jurisdiction of the Sheriff's Department where it should have stayed in the first place. Our animal control officers, who were tireless advocates for all animals, were prevented authority to remove animals who they determined to be neglected and abused by on-train deputies who were only given that authority." Now, I'm not criticizing those deputies. I want to make sure that I come across loud and clear here. "I have to believe that our county will now stand behind our Sheriff's Department, insist that they get it right for all the people and the animals in Grand Traverse County. I for one hope that it can and will happen. We should use Antrim County, where I come from, as a model. Sheriff Dan Bean loves animals and works to ensure their safety and the public's by closely assisting the animal control department under his jurisdiction. They employ an exemplary animal-loving qualified people, who incidentally are not police officers. I covet a job like that, and I even offer my services free until we can get it off the ground. This move is a positive one if we all work together and see it as such." Now, I want to just explain something to you folks that are here and who do not know me. I have a lot of passions in my life. One of them is animals. I am passionate about animals. I'm also passionate about the law. I have worked in the legal profession for over 25 years, and I know what facts are, and I stand on facts. Now, the fact is, is last year at this time, I drove by a farm where a horse was starving. I have this indexed, and I have FOIA requests, and I spent six months of my life at no pay and all my own expenses trying to determine how something could happen like this in Grand Traverse County. We are supposed to be the cream of the crop, the best of the best, and this was anything but what happened to these animals on our watch. We need to do better. We need to work together. We need to find solutions. We need people who are passionate like we are, most of us here, that love animals. We don't need animosity, we don't need blaming and finger pointing. We need a group of people who are going to work together, and I'm here to hopefully help start that.
Thank you, Ms. Zarafa. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is June McGrath, and actually I live in Antrim County, but I'm with ACPA Rescue Group, and we work out of the Grand Traverse County five counties, and I'm not a real good speaker, so. But I am passionate about animals, and I do see that the animal control officers that you have here are pretty much the cream of the crop. They're well-trained. You guys have done a wonderful job training them. They do great, great work. And we, who do rescue, see that, you know, an animal control agency really is important. Sheriff Department is great, but, you know, they're trained to do what the officers are not trained to do. When we have issues, you know, as a rescue group, we don't have the right to, legal right, even though we're registered with the state, to do anything legally with a stray animal or anything. So we know what to do. We know when people call us who to send it to, and that it's going to get done. So your expertise is already here, so I don't know why, gosh, I'm just babbling, and I'm sorry. Let me start over. It's just really important that you chuck what you do and kind of incorporate those animal control officers into the Sheriff's Department because it's so important. I'm sorry, I'm babbling, and I know what I want to say, but because I feel so heartfelt, it just isn't coming out right.
Your passion is coming out just fine.
It's just that, you know, it's working well, and I know a budget is really important, and we're here to help the community, not to talk to you guys or tell you're not, you're doing anything wrong or anything like that. We just want to know what to tell people when they call us. We get the majority of our calls from Grand Traverse area, and I would like to be able to say, yes, call the Sheriff's Department and know that they are getting what they need, and I just don't know that that's going to happen. And as far as the money coming from the licensing, I think if you don't have an animal control to watch over people, people are not going to pay that thoroughly. You know, I'm already hearing people saying, "I'm not paying if nobody's watching me." So that money's not going to come into your budget that you think it is. So I hope I made a difference. I'm sure I didn't, but thank you for listening anyways.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Lori Borziak, and 3501 Manchester, Traverse City. I represent Horse North Rescue, and I just would like you guys to let us know who we are to contact when we get horrific calls on starved horses. It's like, we call the Sheriff's Department, we have to know that it is going to be handled, and I just plead with you guys to give us answers so that we know that it will be handled, and we know what to tell people, and that we can do what we do best and get the horses saved and into good homes, so.
Thank you. Excuse me, but we don't applaud. It's just a matter of respect. Everybody has a different opinion, and they're entitled to it. Okay.
Hello, Michelle Alana Conos, 2526 Miller Road, Thompsonville, 49683. I am a Benzie County resident, so I do know about, we do have, it is under the Sheriff's Department, but they are designated officers, so it's just not falling in with the rest of the calls. And I'm going to say a word, I don't know, maybe because I don't live in this county and I don't pay attention, millage? That's how we afford ours. I don't know. Has that been a thought? That's pretty much what all I have to say because I agree with what the rest of them. But I had to bring that up because nobody's saying the N-word, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Thanks very much for giving me the opportunity. I'm Lori Connie, and 8355 East Maple Hill Drive, Suttons Bay, Lelandaw County. And I just wanted to give you all the perspective as a Lelandaw County resident. We do have an animal control officer, Deputy Wayne Kelchuk, great guy, has worked closely with Ed and Cindy, and I have as well over the last several years, and they've been very responsive and helpful. So our concern is, and by the way, our animal control is, of course, under the Sheriff's Department umbrella, which is pretty common throughout the state, and we have such a sense of security and calm in Lelandaw County, knowing that Deputy Kelchuk is there, and he's liaised with Ed and Cindy. And so the ripple effect that we're concerned about, if the control of homeless unwanted animals goes away in Grand Traverse County, is what's going to happen for Lelandaw County. And I'm speaking selfishly here, but we know, because I've had the experience in other counties, that animals will get dumped in Lelandaw County from Grand Traverse County, and so it's going to exasperate the situation, and there's going to be extra cost involved in that. And the fact that Lelandaw County has a relationship with Cherryland Humane Society to bring their dogs to the Humane Society as well, so we're affecting Grand Traverse County and Lelandaw County. And so the question is, there are more than just the Maine County being affected, pardon me, I'm losing my way a little bit, but the Lelandaw County and Benzie County and all of the other animal control facilities that currently exist. So, and lastly, you know, I add the puzzlement to why let two experienced, trained officers go when you're going to have to outlay additional funds to train an inexperienced staff within the Sheriff's Department? Logistically, if you're crunching numbers, it just doesn't seem to make sense to the public. So thanks very much for listening to me. Really appreciate it, and, you know, I hope it works out because we're all very concerned. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please, come on. Please step forward.
Hello, Amber Elliott, 85 East Lights Road, Traverse City, Michigan, 49696. I am going to speak directly to the welfare of the animals, and not to take away from the budgetary concerns, but that's just not my expertise, so I'm going to leave that to the experts. One of the biggest things that I believe we need to be most concerned about, it's not necessarily whether or not the animal control department's still going to exist within the Sheriff's Department instead of the Health Department, but it is about the training. It's not just whether or not it's a noise complaint or if there's a stray, but there is also the concern of whoever gets that call has the ability to read the behaviors of an animal and make sure that that animal is treated humanely. That training alone is, I've spoken with a couple of animal control officers specific to the president of Mako, Michigan, Animal Control Officers of Michigan, and it costs about $500 to get certified to become an actual animal control officer. Deputies, of course, can be under the animal control, but to have the actual tools at hand, I think that that's going to be another budgetary concern, when we do have two animal control officers that have years and years of experience. And I'm just curious if there's been any discussion of possibly pulling them over, or at least one, into the Sheriff's Department so that we already have trained people there. Then also, it's not just dogs, and it's not just cats, there's also the livestock, the horses, and we have a pretty large bison population here, and that has been a concern in the past as well with them getting loose. Having animal control officers who are trained in the ability to manage and read and know how to handle animals is more valuable than just whether or not someone can respond to a phone call. So I'm very, I am very concerned for the welfare of the animals. And then there's going to be this gray area, as things are transitioning, of who's going to be taking care of these calls when this happens. It's also about the vaccinations and the rabies, the rabies shots and things. This will impact the surrounding communities if it's not handled correctly. I would love for there to be a committee. I think that is definitely a good idea. The Benzie County Animal Control is run by a community board and an advisory board, and the answers, it answers to the administrator. If something like that could be worked out, I think that would be great. The biggest concern that I have about all of this is that there wasn't, didn't appear to be anyways, a very well-thought-out plan, and hopefully, moving forward with this amount of concern, something will be figured out soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Hello, my name is Barbara McCullin. My address is 458 Highview Road, Traverse City, Michigan. I am a Grand Traverse County taxpayer, and I'm also an accountant, so I do understand budgets. But the lady before me spoke it so well. It would be very much a tragedy to lose Ed and Cindy and all their expertise. I've also experienced, I've volunteered for, sorry, I get nervous when I'm speaking, but I volunteered for Cherryland Humane Society. I've also volunteered for ACPA. I'm the executive director of Hope, which is helping owners with pet expenses. And I've also experienced, I've been one of the people that have been bitten by an animal, and Ed and Cindy had kept the animal for quarantine for me to make sure I didn't have to go through the costly and painful shots of rabies. So their ability and their training is so right on, and you're not going to get that. I mean, I see no problem with switching from sheriff to, you know, Health Department to the sheriff, but I think the sheriffs are going to need, those deputies are going to need their expertise, and so are the animals, and so are the people. Again, I can see a lot of cost, and it's going to be very time-consuming, to try to get the deputies to the level that you have in Ed and Cindy. They work wonderfully with Cherryland, with ACPA's, with HANDS, they work with all of these rescue organizations, and to lose them would be very much a tragic mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Jane Finley, 2099 Yule Lane in Traverse City. And I'm not a public speaker, so this is the first time I've ever done it. And I'm not a public speaker, so this is the first time I've ever done this. I have also been able to see Cindy in at her work. In changing from Health Department to Sheriff's Department, you know, fine, but they are good at what they do. They can read the animals, they can go into a situation, and they've had the experience and expertise to deal with an animal. And especially, you're talking this 60 days, talking with Cherryland and developing a plan over six, what's going to happen in the meantime with untrained deputies that feel threatened by a growling dog? Are they going to shoot it? Are they going to leave it there, to leave it alone, to run? They need, there has to be a time of training. I don't see it happening by the 31st of December. I think you really need to consider the expertise and the gentleness and the patience of these two people you have right now and incorporate them into this somehow for the sake of the animals and the public's reaction when their animals are being mistreated by an untrained person who doesn't want to be there in the first place. I think I remember a comment earlier when this came up some months ago, a deputy commenting, he didn't want a dog pooping in the back of his car when he might have to go to an accident scene and put some people in there, you know, from the accident. Are you going to have to buy more trucks, something the deputies can use? Are they going to be full-time animal people? I don't know, a lot of questions and I guess I just have a lot of unknowns and concerns of what's going to happen during this whole transition training time with animals that are perceived to be running and growly and they're really not, they're just scared. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Kropas, supported by Commissioner Klaus to approve the agenda. Discussion.
Are we having a closed session to discuss the court case on Monday?
No, I can actually comment publicly on that if you'd like.
We did, we got no reports.
But no, no.
We can approve the agenda. You can just report it under Commissioner's.
I certainly can. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Bonnie, it is your turn.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Receive and file. Number one, East Bay Township Resolution opposing Senate Bill 13. Number two, City of Lansing Resolution Regarding Senate Bill 13. Number three, Health and Human Services Board Minutes of August 25. Number four, Health and Human Services Board Minutes of September 22. Number five, Board of Public Works Finance Minutes of October 7. Number six, Land Bank Authority Minutes of October 14. Number seven, Traverse City, Traverse Area District Library Minutes of October 15. Number eight, Northern Michigan Community Action Agency Minutes of October 22. Number nine, Northwestern Regional Airport Commission Minutes of October 27. Number 10, Health and Human Services Board Minutes of October 28. Number 11, Department of Human Services Board Minutes of October 30. Number 12, Board of Public Works Finance Minutes of November 4. Number 13, Board of Public Works Regular Minutes of November 12. Number 14, Commission on Aging Minutes of November 17. Approvals. The Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 15, Hospital Network Healthcare Services Medical Waste Services. Number 16, Mitchell and McCormick Business Associate Agreement and Upper Peninsula Health Information Exchange. The Resource Management Administration Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 17, Radio Maintenance Contract Motorola Solutions. Number 18, Landfill Surcharge for 2016. Number 19, Social Media Policy. Number 20, Appointments to Boards and Committees. The Ways and Means Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 21, Image Soft OnBase Software Maintenance Support Renewal. Number 22, APS Electronic Ticketing Software Maintenance Support Renewal. Number 23, Health Innovation Grant. Number 24, Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, PA 152. Number 25, County Lockdown Policy. Number 26, Third Party Administrator for Housing Grant. Number 27, Martin Luther King Junior Day Closing January 18, 2016. Number 28, Support of 2% Tribal Grant Applications. Number 29, Central Dispatch 800 megahertz radio project change order request. Number 30, Budget Adjustments. Number 31, Commission on Aging Fund Balance Commitment.
Would any member of the public like any item removed from the consent calendar? Mr. Cooney would like to remove item number 21. Any Commissioners, Commissioner Weelock?
Number 18 and 28, please.
All righty. Hand me your pen, will you? Mine's in my pocket. Okay. 18 and 28, correct?
17 and 29.
Oh geez, hand it. Mine's in my pocket, I can get up and get it, but, you know. Okay. Anyone else?
Should we just go through everything?
Yeah. And that's your Christmas gift to us, right? All right. Thank you, you're swell.
It's a county clerk pen, so I probably stole it from somewhere.
Thank you, Bonnie. I would entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as amended.
So moved.
I'll support.
Moved by Commissioner Crawford, supported by Commissioner Kropas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Item number 17, my guess is that would be you, Commissioner Klaus.
That would be, that has to do with our paying $500 a month for radio maintenance. And I did vote on it at the RMNA meeting, but then after item number 29 came up the next week regarding the Motorola, and so if you don't mind if I can just bring them both together or just one at a time?
One at a time.
Fine, number 17, I just don't agree with it.
All right. I would entertain a motion regarding the radio maintenance contract. Is there one?
I'll make the motion to approve the radio maintenance contract with Motorola Solutions.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Kropas, supported by Commissioner Crawford. Discussion. Commissioner Weelock?
We should point out that this contract will probably not run the full year as all of the equipment that's covered under this maintenance contract is scheduled to be upgraded and replaced during fiscal year 2016. So that's why we're issuing a maintenance contract on a monthly basis.
All right. Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Aye.
There we go. I think Bonnie's got that one. Landfill Surcharge, gee, would that be you, Commissioner Weelock?
I'm thinking I have not supported a landfill surcharge in probably in excess of 20 years between the township and the county and I won't be supporting this one either.
All righty. I would move to accept the landfill surcharge for 2016 as presented in the packet.
Support.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Max Power, supported by Dr. Johnson. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
No, by name, please.
Roll call, please.
She can write down the names.
Well, you said, you know, if you want a roll call, I'll give you one.
I just want the minutes to denote by name that Weelock opposed.
I can usually catch the voice vote if it's just one person. Otherwise, I would like a roll call when they, when they have, when they're not unanimous, but.
I can do that for you, Bonnie.
Okay.
Image Soft, that would be? Mr. Cooney.
You missed 20.
Did I? I'm sorry.
Sunny, didn't you pull 20?
No. I pulled 20.
28, I'm sorry.
Oh, good.
I'm so far, I couldn't hear.
Mr. Cooney.
I just wanted to point out with the Image Soft OnBase Maintenance and Support Renewal, as you know, my office is going to be going to a web-based system prosecutor by CarpeL because of all the problems that we've had with OnBase. With this maintenance and support renewal, I'm bothered by the fact that we're supposed to go live with CarpeL in March. Image Soft refused to negotiate anything other than a full-year contract for support services even though they know that we're not going to be using these licenses after March. The county is a pretty big customer for Image Soft and OnBase and I'm not sure what we're getting for our maintenance and support dollars because frankly, for a long time there during the summer, it was going down just about every day. That stops my staff from doing their jobs. We've had a long laundry list of items that we wanted to have fixed by Image Soft and, you know, I went about a year and a half trying to get those repaired and could never get anywhere with that company. And, you know, I guess I'm just asking this board to keep that in mind as we go down this Image Soft OnBase road, that I've been very dissatisfied with the product.
Chairwoman, may I ask a question?
You certainly may.
Bob, how many departments, now that you are exiting OnBase, how many departments are continuing to use it?
Do you know?
There were six original offices, including, I think Prosecutor, Clerk, Finance, Friend of the Court.
Circuit Court?
Well, then Circuit Court came on later. And the probate court has it only for, is it?
I don't think they have the true filing part of it, but.
Okay, they have some, some parts of it. District Court uses it only for civil cases. They've had too many problems to think about putting their criminal cases in OnBase.
So this resolution here, which states approximately 15 departments, 130 users, and obviously for, I believe, a large sum, and it's a year as you stated, when we pull out the prosecutors, it's probably a small percentage of the grand total of people that are under this maintenance.
There's about $28,000 in maintenance costs for my office and I expect that to go down to less than $10,000 with the new product.
Is there an issue with us passing this resolution, then? Does this a renegotiation situation now that prosecutors' offices are out?
You know, I suppose you could ask the IT department to go back and try to renegotiate that with Image Soft. I can't believe that they don't have any flexibility on that, as big a customer as we are. You know, maybe they really don't, but I was disappointed with that.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I mean, I wish we'd have known this when we voted the other night. If we, if we hold the contract up, what does that mean for you, anything at all?
Well, it is important to have the licensing agreements continue because there are so many users in the county and it does affect our office until March at least.
So are we held hostage?
Yes.
Is that where we're at?
That's, that's it in, that's it in a nutshell, but I will tell you where, this is where I'm coming from. Mr. Cooney is coming off of OnBase at the end of March. As far as I'm concerned, his $28,000 needs to be divided and he needs to pay 25% of that and IT can pick up the rest. That's where I'm coming from.
Pro-rated?
Because I do not think that people who are not using this, and let me tell you, I use it. You've seen me up there in the computer with the little, with the finance department. It's cumbersome, it's slow, it's, I don't have a whole lot of good warm and fuzzies about the software myself. I'm okay to pass this, but I'm going to ask that Mr. Cooney's department is not charged for the entire year. I think IT needs to pay the rest. If they want this software, which apparently they do.
I can tell you that what we agreed to was that the District Court was going to take over those licenses to get their probation officers started on OnBase for criminal cases. I'm not sure how important that is at this time when they're not doing the criminal cases with OnBase, but I know District Court was willing to take that on, but ideally, what we would have done is simply cancel the licenses after March, so.
Where's the wisdom in District Court adding on criminal cases to a software system that we know is failing daily in the summer?
I think the idea was that we had to pay for the full year, so it made more sense to just shift the licenses over. And there are some startup charges involved in getting a new license, apparently. It isn't just, okay, we stop paying the yearly cost. The way Don Sheehan explained it to me, that there is a cost for initiating a license as well.
Do you want to, Commissioner Weelock?
I think my suggestion is that these are an annual license that we have to have for some of our operation. I think, I think I would make a motion to approve the renewal, but I would direct our IT staff to make contact, you know, immediately with Image Soft and OnBase to express our concerns and renegotiate, notify them that we expect a reduction in fees as soon as departments start coming off from that service. And they're not, when we're not utilizing their service, we shouldn't be paying for it.
Where, I'm willing to support your motion, provided that IT takes, they're the ones that want this OnBase, provided, and Mr. Cooney does not, and he should not be paying for a service that he does not want, that does not work for him. It comes out of his budget and I just don't think that that is right. If IT wants this, which apparently they do, I think they need to pay the $21,000 that Mr. Cooney is being charged for the entire year when actually he's only using $7,000 worth.
Well, we just need to remember that IT's budget, Mr. Cooney's budget, is still Grand Traverse County taxpayer money and those monies are all prorated. The IT budget gets prorated back to each of the departments that uses IT services. So, you know, I think if you want to have a discussion like that, we can ask the sheriff what proportion of his budget is spent to IT. It's a, it's a large number.
Oh, I'm sure.
And I think that's, as we move forward in our 2016 budget discussions, our IT charges and the charges back to individual departments needs to be a key part of that discussion.
Well, you've made a motion, is there support?
I need some clarification.
Certainly.
Did you say to renegotiate, to have them, OnBase, change the price as departments come off of it?
Yes.
Well, why would we vote to approve a contract that we want to change?
Because January 1st, we need those licenses.
Right.
We cannot operate January 1st without those licenses.
But we're not going to be, I mean, why, if I was OnBase, I wouldn't change the contract. I'd say you signed a one-year contract.
Yeah, but the point about it is, is we can't continue to operate our computer systems without those licenses as of January 1st.
Well, isn't that convenient that it came to us on December 22nd?
Well, I'm not exactly sure why it came to us on December 22nd, but that's where we're at.
Bonnie wants.
Bonnie, I think you might want to talk to the Circuit Court judges and IT because everything that's filed is through OnBase and Image Soft and in the Circuit Court. It's all connected and everything's electronic and it's all this, I'm pretty sure it's all this system. So you might want to talk a little bit with IT about how that works with Circuit Court and the county clerk because.
I can see you having heart palpitations, Bonnie.
Like I said, everything is electronically filed and it's Image Soft and OnBase. I mean, yes, there are problems with it, but.
No, I don't support not the resolution, I'm just saying if, the second part of the motion is, and we're going to renegotiate the price. It's like, well, we're going to sign this contract, but then we're going to renegotiate the price. It's kind of like buying a car and then three days later saying, you know, I'm going to need a discount of $15,000.
The motion is that we renew the contract, but we direct our staff to investigate the possibility of this, what we're paying for and make sure that we're getting what we're paying for. If we're not utilizing the service, we shouldn't be paying for it.
And I think what you're talking about will probably happen when you don't need the license and the court needs them. That, that should shift anyway. I mean, Mr. Menzel should be able to do that administratively, I would believe, you know.
All right. Mr.?
Unless I'm wrong.
That's correct. And, and actually, the way we've worked it out, the, the court is going to end up paying after March for those licenses. It's not going to be coming out of my budget.
Okay.
Either way, the county is paying for licenses that we probably don't need for three-quarters of a year. And, and that's my concern about it. I think what Sunny is proposing makes sense, that even though I think you do have to sign this agreement tonight, that it doesn't hurt to go back to have the administrator direct, the IT director, to have the IT director, to have a conversation with Image Soft indicating that this board is upset about that, and that they should have had some flexibility on that, and we shouldn't have to enter into this contract for licenses that we really don't need.
Okay.
I will support Commissioner Wheelock's motion.
Commissioner Claus?
Just a comment, when we run into these kind of renewals, it sure would be nice if there was like a three month, three months prior to the renewal date, so that we do have time to look at it. I mean, and it is.
Wouldn't that be nice?
I mean, if that was just part of the contract.
Well, and unfortunately, some of these contracts have automatic renewals in them, and if you don't notify them in writing 90 days before the renewal date, it automatically renewed anyway.
For what it's worth, Mr. Menzel, while he is trying to vacation in Arizona today, he and I had a contract, a conversation about contracts this morning, and after the first of the year, he is going to assign someone to go through every single contract we have and attend to this kind of occurrence. And we talked at about 11 o'clock this morning. So I want to let you all know that he understands there is a problem with our contracts, and it's not just this one, it's all of our contracts. So with that, since we are being held hostage, I'm going to take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That was painful.
Thanks for bringing that up, Bob.
Sorry about that.
No, it's not brought up, but I mean, it was painful for me to vote yes.
Number 28.
That would be you.
Supported the 2% tribal grant. As per many, many, many conversations that I've had with you before. I believe that the Grand Traverse ban is in direct violation of the consent agreement between Grand Traverse Ban and Governor John Engler and how they distribute this 2% money, and I have never supported the 2% tribal grants the way that they're distributed, and I won't be supporting this one either.
All righty. In that case, I will move to support the 2% tribal grant applications. Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Max Power, supported by Commissioner Claus. Discussion. Roll call, please.
The consent agreement is very specific of how the funding of the 2% money has to be distributed back to the communities. Grand Traverse Ban has never done that one time in all the years they've distributed 2% money. They, for up until a few years ago, they never even asked the counties or the governmental entities for any input. They just distributed the money how they wanted to, which basically is still the way they do it. They ask us for input, but they don't really listen to it anyhow. It's just, they are absolutely in violation of the consent agreement, and remembering that the consent agreement was supposed to renew in October of 2013, and we still don't have a new one either, also.
Does the board have any control over that?
The only control we have is the applications, that's it.
They accept it or deny them?
They, the Grand Traverse Ban will not review applications unless they are submitted through a government entity, and.
So is it just the state that, is it the governor that?
Only the Attorney General of Michigan could bring a lawsuit to enforce the compact.
So next time you see.
So pretty much, good luck with it.
Next time you see Mr. Shute Bendizir.
The compact says that the monies has to be paid to the local governmental unit.
And then the local governmental units are supposed to distribute it as they.
As they see fit, and that's not the situation. The situation is, Grand Traverse Ban determines what charitable organization or whatever they want to give X number of dollars of 2% money to, and that's totally in violation of the compact.
I'm going to try one more time, Bonnie, roll call.
Crawford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kropa?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Claus?
Yes.
Max Power?
Yes. Motion carries. Central Dispatch, I'm going to throw caution in the wind, that was you, Commissioner Claus.
Please inform me. Educate me. And I'm going to use round numbers. I know Jason sent us a email earlier on it. It pretty much breaks down that if we had a, we had a $3.5 million or $3,450,000 contract with Motorola, we took away a $450,000 simulcast paging, and our new contract is going to be roughly $3,270,000, which is why I don't believe Motorola's treating us as good as they could treat us, so I'm not supporting it.
All right. Is there a motion? Moved by Dr. Johnson. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Kropa. Discussion.
I think the issue that comes, at the time that we entered into the original purchase order with Motorola, 800 megahertz paging was simply not available. The upgrade of the system allows for 800 megahertz paging, and that will be added to our purchase of our newer equipment, and thereby, the Motorola contract, we did not fulfill our original contractual obligations, which included a large maintenance portion. We won't be paying that maintenance money in 2016 and '17. That's where the money's going to, you know, it's not a perfect situation. We're not getting the whole 438,000, was it around 450,000? Right in that neighborhood.
Yep.
Anyway, we're not getting all of that back, we're getting about half of it back.
All right. Moved by Dr. Johnson, supported by Commissioner Kropa. Roll call, Bonnie.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kropa?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Claus?
No.
Crawford?
Yes.
Max Power?
Yes. Next on the agenda, special orders of business. We have none, items removed from the consent calendar.
We just did.
We just did that, I kind of moved ahead there. Department action items. The claim summary is on your desk.
Madam Chairman, I would move to pay claims in the amount of $9,326,326.65.
Is there support?
Hard number for me to say.
Support? Moved by Commissioner Wheelock, supported by Commissioner Crawford. Discussion.
I just want to thank the Claims Committee.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Because for the first time ever, I think that we're actually looking at claims in this county, and that's, this board should be proud of that.
Well, I have to, again, Cherry Wolf is in the back. I invited her up, she's the Deputy Finance Director, she demurred, but I have to tell you, what she has done in the last week has been amazing. There is, she brought in a great big box of files, there's a computer system where you can look up, I mean, easily look up claims. So again, thank you, Cherry.
I don't think people realize how easily claims were passed through, and how much more scrutiny is coming onto them now, and I'm certain it will translate itself into a very noticeable number.
Well, it's not only that, but what we are seeing now, and I've already met with Mr. Cooney, is going to translate into some changes in policy, I believe, from this board. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. If you would hand that down, Cherry asked me to sign that, and there it is.
I would note that, I haven't done claims for a few years, but I can remember spending three or four hours taking invoice by invoice and matching them to the computer log.
We don't do that.
Because that's the way we used to get them.
Oh, yes, we do.
Sometimes if there's a question, we look at it, yes.
Today, we do.
That's the way we used to get them. One invoice at a time and check it from the computer.
Sorry, I missed it today.
Yeah, I know you are.
Each and every receipt will be checked.
Okay, good.
All right. Next on the agenda, hauler licenses for 2016. As you see in your packet, we have a recommendation to approve the 2016 hauler licenses as submitted by staff, an authorized signature by myself. I would make that motion.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Kropa, and then Commissioner Wheelock.
We do not need hauler licenses for Grand Traverse County, period.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Uh.
If you want to, if you want to just.
I believe that hauler licenses in Grand Traverse County have been a farce for a long time. We only have a small portion of the people that actually haul waste ever pay those hauler licenses. The hauler license has nothing to do with how much waste they haul, has nothing to do how many trucks they haul. It is simply, American Waste pays for a $25, $25 hauler license, period. It doesn't matter whether they're running a pickup truck and a trailer, or whether they're running 50 garbage trucks up and down the road.
I happen to agree with you. Bob, can we not do this?
Well, this is my caution, and that is that we have a solid waste management plan that was approved by the DEQ, and part of that is our ordinance, our solid waste ordinance. That's how we carry out our solid waste plan, and licenses are part of that. And so when you change the ordinance and you take the licenses out of it, are you following your solid waste management plan? I think there's a chance that the MDQ says, no, you're not doing that anymore. And the DEQ can, you know, I believe that they could come in and audit us, probably, look at what we're doing with solid waste. I think if we.
You want us to amend the plan first, correct?
I think that the prudent thing to do is to figure out how we're going to have a, what our solid waste management plan is going to be in Grand Traverse County, make sure that we run it by DEQ, that they're okay with it, and I think we need to slow down on it.
All right.
I think, I think there's two pieces. One is the solid waste plan, the second is the solid waste ordinance. I think our solid waste plan gives us much more flexibility in whether or not the county board establishes the policies, or whether a resource recovery council establishes a policy. When the, when the solid waste plan was rewritten, probably about three years ago, there was a lot of rewrite in that terminology of how this was put together. The old plan actually assigned those responsibilities to the Department of Public Works, but when we rewrote the plan three years ago, three years, four years, you know, time escapes me, a lot of those items were changed. But I do agree with Bob in that significant changes need to be made to the solid waste ordinance to proceed with discussions that we've had about elimination of a resource recovery department, and the elimination of licensing, and the listing of licensed receiving stations. There's a significant change has to be made to the ordinance.
That having been said, Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I mean, I think obviously 2016 is going to be our year of change, but I think that's going to be one more thing that's going to have to be tackled, because obviously in this late hour, I think we have to continue with what we're doing because of the various ordinances and that, so we don't run afoul. It's a big word for me.
You know, I.
I know it is.
You know, I do apologize to the haulers that have to pay the $25 fee, and I agree that it's not necessary, but on the advice of counsel, I'm going to support this motion. And with that, I will call for a vote. Roll call, please, Bonnie.
Kropa?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Crawford?
She stepped out.
Johnson?
Yes.
Max Power?
Yes. Next on the agenda is travel policy addendum. You have in your packet a proposed travel policy. I would like to make a change. I spoke with Mr. Cooney this afternoon about this. In our travel policy, it states that employees may use their own vehicle and request standard mileage reimbursement, or use a rental vehicle. I would like to add that employees will be reimbursed for whatever is less. If it, for instance, and Mr. Cooney and I spoke about this, he said, you know, there needs to be some kind of common sense rule in here where if it's within $25, you know, you could still possibly use your own vehicle. And as he explained to me, one of his prosecutors lives in Fife Lake, and perhaps she's going to a trial, and it's more inexpensive for her, rather than to drive all the way into town, get a rental car, and then drive to the trial. It makes more sense for her to be able to use her own vehicle. That having been said, as I go through the bills, and you all know I am, I'm seeing employees that are using their own vehicles, and it would be substantially less expensive for the taxpayer if they rented a car. So how shall we word this, Mr. Cooney, do you think? I would like to add it. Employees will be reimbursed.
I'm going to make a suggestion that you implement this policy maybe in January.
All right.
That'd give me time to draft something.
Okay.
If the rest of the board agrees with your suggestions.
And if they don't, we'll pass it as is.
Well, the IRS will probably publish a new 2016 mileage rate in January, too.
Well, I think what I will do is, I am, what I will do is, I will support the travel policy addendum as presented, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Cooney to make that revision for us to consider in January, because just because we enact it today doesn't mean we can't.
Can't change it.
Change it in January. So I will move to accept and approve the travel policy addendum as presented in our packet.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Max Power, supported by Commissioner Wheelock. Discussion. Commissioner Crawford?
I did look it up, and the IRS business mileage rate for 2016 is 54 cents. It already came out.
It went down.
54 cents.
Well, we'll change it in January. Did our taxes go down, too?
Nope.
Let's check it. Okay. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I read this correctly. If they do use a rental car, they can get a gas card to use, so that.
Yeah, we currently have.
All the expenses, the rental car and then the gas at that point.
We currently get a gas card, so we're not paying taxes on the gas if we have a rental car, or I suppose, well, only if we have a rental car, otherwise it doesn't make sense.
That's true. It'd be nice if we got that for our personal vehicle, but I don't, I don't think so.
Well, then you wouldn't get the mileage, probably. That's part of it.
Little humor here, folks, it's Christmas. All right.
I can hear it, too.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, and Mr. Cooney, you will bring us back something.
Yes.
In January, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, old unfinished business, resource recovery. I invited Commissioner Wheelock to speak with Sarah, and/or myself, and/or Paula, but Sarah, Paula, and I sat down, and, well, actually, Paula did it by telephone, she didn't, if she was sitting, I wouldn't know. And this is the result of the RFP, and therefore, hang on a minute here, I'm going to move to approve the RFP as presented in our packet, and instruct staff to send it out and see what we get. Is there support? No?
Support.
I'm in.
All right. Supported by Commissioner Claus. Discussion. All right. Commissioner Wheelock?
Two things. You know, I'm still concerned as per the discussion with the household hazardous waste contractor. I still believe if you're going to issue an RFP, you're going to hire a company or individual to operate your resource recovery. I would like them to have the opportunity to select their vendor. And if we approve this, whereas we approve the household hazardous waste collection services contract with Environmental Recycling Group, we are telling what a potential bidder, who they have to buy their services from, and I think that's, I think that's a bad decision. And probably more importantly, is the discussion we had a few minutes ago, and the fact that we have issues with our solid waste ordinance that need to be addressed before we can do this.
Well, Commissioner Wheelock, I appreciate your opinion. You did express that opinion at a previous meeting, and I invited you to participate in the RFP process, and I understand that. I understand that due to time constraints, you were not able to do that. That having been said, in order to secure dates for household hazardous waste, we need to move forward. We can revise and/or change what we are going out and requesting in proposals, but I do believe that if we are going to secure household hazardous waste for the citizens of Grand Chavers County next year, we need to approve this. That's my personal opinion. Anyone else?
One other comment that I tend to make is, please remember, resource recovery does not receive one dime of general fund monies. This is an enterprise fund. It's paying 100% with the tipping fees and the hauler licensing fees.
The hauler licenses, which-
I'm just saying.
I know.
And I mentioned both.
Thank you. Not necessary.
You know, so, so if you, if you believe this change is going to save the taxpayers' money, I think you're absolutely wrong.
The idea is to improve service, and we're working on that. Behind the scenes. This is, this is step number one. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Johnson?
Well, I was just going to add that, I mean, we really don't know yet. I mean, other than it may save the taxpayers some money, and the fact that we could lower some fees, you know.
And we are lowering them.
You know, same, and we had the same thing. We did soil erosion, where we found out that that wasn't viable to, to go to that. So, I mean, to me, we're still kind of looking at this, I guess, so.
I'd like to restate the motion, too.
I was just going to say.
I'm, I made the motion.
Well, on page 94, they had three different things.
That's why I'm going to add.
And you only mentioned the RFP.
Hang on.
And you didn't talk about if you're going to do the household hazardous waste or the elimination of the resource recovery department. I was just wondering if that's all into one motion?
It is.
Okay, so the recommendation that is on page 94-
Yes.
-is all your motion?
That is all my motion.
Sounds good. Well, then I have a question.
Certainly.
Who are we reassigning the functions of the resource recovery department to until a proposal is accepted by the Board of Commissioners? Because it's in the motion.
I'm assuming that would mean it goes to the administrator, who could assign someone to do it, but we don't know who that's going to be.
No, we don't. We have to get, we have to go out for a proposal. We're going to receive those proposals, and then the administrator is going to either accept or, and actually, the Board of Commissioners is going to either accept or deny those proposals. And if we accept those proposals, the administrator will assign that work to a department. Commissioner Crawford?
But that sounds like a, a time-consuming process, so in the meantime, who will take on the duties of the resource recovery department?
Household hazardous waste has always been contracted.
Okay.
The recycle smart newsletter is currently being done in-house.
Uh huh.
This RFP is going, and Paula is kind of supervising this. This RFP is going to, we are asking for brush drop-off services. That typically does not start until April.
Uh huh.
Okay. The education and coordination services, quite honestly, I clicked on, I've been following for months, what education services have we been receiving? Education plans, there have not been any. None. So, this is something that, new that we are doing. The, as, as far as the reporting function, that will be handled administratively. Okay? So, everybody's clear?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson's not?
It still seems to me we're putting the cart before the horse on this, kind of, I think.
How so?
Eliminating the department and going out for an RFP. I would think we'd at least see the RFP, and then make the adjustments as we needed, but...
One thing you have to remember, even though you're contracting your household hazardous waste, staff still handle all of the scheduling and setting of the appointments.
That's correct.
So, someone is going to have to do that.
I mean, that's not till March, I think, the first. So, we've got some time for that.
The administrator?
So, maybe in the motion, rather than leaving it a blanket, I got to scroll to the right thing here. Rather than, it says elimination of resource recovery department and assigning the functions of the resource recovery department until a proposal is accepted by the Board of Commissioners. It would probably, to me, be wiser to assign that function to the administrator.
Okay.
And then we don't leave a blank hole in a motion that we are voting on.
I am more than happy to do that.
Okay. Since you made the motion, I'm sure you're willing to make a friendly amendment.
I am.
That, on the wording, it'll say, and assign the functions of the resource recovery department until a proposal is accepted. This just died.
(laughing)
To the administrator. My plug is back there on the wall. To the administrator.
You need to read it? Yes.
Yeah, I think, okay. And I don't know who the second was.
Klaus, I think it was Klaus.
And I think I heard him say that he agreed to the friendly amendment as well.
I'm sure he did. He's nodding over there.
It's friendly.
Dr. Johnson, again.
Yeah, I just, I saw John duck a little when you said assign, so. He was worried he had something.
Nah.
The last time I spoke, I assigned John to a project, so I understand.
A personal growth opportunity.
He's here to defend himself tonight. He has a personal growth opportunity. All right. All those in favor say, I'm sorry, Bob.
I would ask that you also require review by my office of the RFP, and that's only because we are in contact with MDEQ right now to see whether it's going to meet with their approval later on.
I am always happy to do that.
Because it says, it says it's been reviewed by Deputy Civil Counsel Chris Forsyte, and this information that I have.
It has, but we keep getting feedback from DEQ is the problem. It's kind of an ongoing process here.
They're chatty Cathy dolls. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, Bonnie.
She's okay. You can figure it out.
She wants roll call. I'm going to let her have roll call.
I like the roll call. Belak?
No.
Klaus?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kropa?
Yes.
Max Power?
Yes. All right. Appointment from ad hoc building authority committee. Dr. Johnson?
No, you skipped soil erosion.
Soil erosion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. Soil erosion ordinance revision. Hang on a minute, I have to go there. I'm going. I think there's... I'm technologically challenged sometimes. All righty. All right. As you know, soil erosion is going to be under the auspices of the Health Department, and those changes have been made in the soil erosion ordinance, and I am going to move to approve the soil erosion ordinance with those revisions.
I'll support it.
Discussion. Commissioner Belak?
Have we heard from Environmental Health Department in regard to their abilities and management of this, this ordinance?
Yes. DEQ contacted me as soon as I sent them the revised ordinance, naming the Health Department as the county enforcing agency. And the, I, I've been told that they are not going to approve that change. Now, there might be some room for them to change their minds about that, if they were to meet with maybe some members of this board and the administrator, and explain what the reasoning is. But they are concerned because they're in the middle of an audit. They have found some deficiencies with the program. And what I was told is they, they really aren't excited about the idea of switching departments at the time, same time that we have this audit going on, and there are deficiencies that have been noted, and we're going to be requested to correct those. We're supposed to get a letter the first week of January explaining what those deficiencies are, and it has primarily to do with not enough staff.
Dr., I'm sorry, Dr. Klaus. Why do we do that? I mean, Dr. Klaus. I'm not the only one.
I missed my calling.
It is.
Why isn't, well, we had at that ad hoc committee, it was a five to two vote to keep it in construction code, and the two that voted for to go to Health Department was, I believe, was Chris, you, and Dan Lathrop. And the other five committee members wanted it left in building code, or in construction code. Why doesn't it follow construction code along with planning and development? Just, it's, it's where DEQ would probably want it, kind of in that umbrella, and it just, it makes sense to me to be there.
Do you, do you want to address that, John?
Sure. As a planning and development director, John Syke, we looked at, really, the soil erosion program as a self-contained program, where it's housed currently with construction code. Certainly, there is the permitting aspect of the, of the program that makes it, makes it common with construction code. But we also looked at where it might have a better fit, and when we looked at the Environmental Health Department, when they're dealing with soils and so forth as part of the, the well and septic permits and so forth, that it seemed like that would be a better fit. There could be more opportunities for cross-training of inspectors, whereby currently where it's housed in construction code, you have building inspectors that are really focused on the building envelope and the interior versus environmental health, where we are dealing more on-site coverage areas, dealing with soils and so forth. So, it seemed like there was an opportunity to have a more efficient program in terms of delivering it, certainly meeting the requirements of the DEQ, and, and seeing where there might be capacity-building opportunities in that location.
Being someone that works with the Health Department, and in the field with well and septic permits, and, and our office getting permits from the Health Department, they seem to be highly taxed as well with, I, I don't know, without putting staff on for the soil erosion, how they would just step up and absorb that extra work without its, without costing the contractors in the field. That would be my concern for that department.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we necessarily want to put a lot more work on the shoulders of the Environmental Health Department. It's more of a relationship thing, and certainly I, the program needs, from what Bob was referring to, the DEQ audit, that seems like there needs to be an increase in inspectors and availability. So, it's not necessarily that we're going to be relying on the Environmental Health inspectors. We really still see it as, as somewhat of a standalone program. So, that program will have to support additional inspectors, so that it meets those requirements.
And what Bob had mentioned is that the DEQ really doesn't want it there at this time anyway, and we could move it at any time. To, once, once DEQ gets through their audit, and, you know, we could move it later on. So, to make the, to make it tougher on our audit by moving it to Environmental Health, when the DEQ really doesn't care to have it there, I guess we're testing the patience of DEQ, possibly?
Ron, I'm, I'm not sure we are. I don't think the DEQ wants it under soil erosion, which is-
No, no, they don't.
Or, I'm sorry, soil erosion under building code. I, I, I think there's a little bit of, of a problem there.
Did I misunderstand, Bob? Did I misunderstand you when you said DEQ didn't want it with the Health Department?
DEQ has to approve whichever department we're going to put it under. You know, they may send the ordinance back and just tell us, no, you can't move it at this time. DEQ doesn't have any preference for counties initially, as far as which department they select. It's up to the Board of Commissioners to make sure the soil erosion is done in this county. But what I was told is that, right now, while it is under the construction code department, while this audit is going on, and they're talking about a multi-year plan to audit and, and continue to inspect and monitor the program, they were not, you know, they, they pretty much flat-out told me they weren't going to switch it. And, you know, I, I'm always hopeful, so I thought, well, they might be willing to sit down and engage in a discussion if, if we can give them some good reasons why we would switch it. But, you know, that's the conversation that I had.
So, so my understanding is incorrect. They don't want to switch it from construction code.
Right. They, they do not, they do not, they're not going to allow us to switch it while this audit is going on.
While the audit is going on. Okay.
And by audit, they were talking about all the monitoring and supervision after this, you know, the formal audit is done.
Is there a need, then, to even address this right now, in your opinion?
Well, this is my recommendation. I would, we, we've already sent a draft copy of the ordinance to DEQ with the request that the Health Department be in charge of the soil erosion program. The, DEQ can simply reject that. They may be willing to have a meeting with us about whether there are some good reasons for, for doing that. I mean, I think if this board were determined to eventually put it under the Health Department, does it make sense to go through a two or, you know, a year or two-year monitoring program under a different department? So, I think, you know, they, they would probably be willing to at least, I'm sure, meet with us to discuss that possibility. I'm just telling you, I was pretty much told flat-out there they weren't going to switch it at this time.
All right. And is there a need to change-
I, I think-
This, at this time?
There isn't a need, but what I'm saying is the DEQ will tell us, you know, during their review of the ordinance, whether we need to switch it back to construction code. I mean, they'll just tell us, well, you can't do this, unless they could be persuaded otherwise. Just, just like they may make other recommendations, or requires of changes be made to the ordinance besides just who the enforcing agency is.
All right. John, this is your bailiwick. You want to weigh in?
Yeah, I would definitely.
And Wendy, you're invited as well, if you want.
I mean, I definitely support Bob.
Tom? You want to step up? You're welcome as well. Come one, come all.
I guess at this point, I don't really know what to say.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, we would support Bob in this, because it makes, I mean, we haven't received any official communications from DEQ, so it's kind of like we're waiting for their announcement, or their audit reports, and their findings, and what they're going to be requiring of us. But until we do that, we might as well proceed in this manner, because we really think, what we're trying to do is, is better place the program in a place where there's going to be better customer service, better oversight-
All right.
-of that program, and ultimately, probably have a better chance of meeting what the DEQ is looking for.
All right. So, your recommendation is to move forward?
Absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Belak?
You know, I, I've thought about this a little bit, and, and I do, I do believe that eventually, this is appropriate to be under, under the environmental health, because of the soils, conditions, and discussions that Bob mentioned earlier. You know, I just wonder about the timing piece again, you know, because we, we have this audit, you know, and, and the bad part about it is I don't know whether this audit's going to take six months, or if it's going to take five years, you know, and, and the, in the proposed follow-up from the audit. And, and therefore, you know, we're, I'm concerned about that a little bit. You know, obviously, we're making structural changes in our organization. Apparently, we've had very little discussion about it. Construction code has moved under the Planning Department, you know, or that's where it's headed to, anyway. You know, we've had, you know, no public discussion of that, per se, or very little public discussion of that, how that's going to affect contractors, and if it, if it's going to affect anyone at all. I, I don't know. But it, but it's, obviously, it's a structural change. You know, whether, whether if we moved soil erosion to the Environmental Health Division of the Health Department, do we also take those, I believe we have two inspectors at Environmental Health now?
They would stay.
They, they would stay, and they would just be under the management, if you will-
Of the Health Department.
-of the Environmental Health Department.
Yes.
I think I can, I can support that idea. I just, I'd like to see a little, I'd like to see this plan fleshed out just a little bit more in order to really have a good understanding of what, what our intention here is and what our direction- direction is.
Commissioner Wheelock, it is my understanding that all the inspectors that we presently have in construction code are staying and they are staying in their offices at Lefraneer. Am I correct, John?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. It is also my understanding that the soil erosion inspectors that we presently have are also staying. They would however be under the auspices of the Health Department. Is that correct, Wendy? Wendy is nodding. Hang on. John, you're recommending to go ahead and approve this ordinance with that change and Bob, you're saying that we can go ahead and approve this ordinance with that change and the DEQ will tell us whether or not we have to change it back?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I suppose you could still have a conversation about whether it's the best move or not.
But I'm, I mean, I'm not...
Because we could always tell DEQ we changed our mind.
I'm not, you know, no, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not married to this, but Commissioner Claus?
The, the one thing that I would ask is that with the environmental health, you get a septic permit for an existing home, you don't need a land use, you don't need a soil erosion permit.
Correct.
Drill a well, you don't need soil erosion permit.
Correct.
When you're, so for the most part, anything going on with a, with the environmental health as it relates to well and septic, they don't require a land use or a soil erosion permit. It would be anything to do with construction, digging up a pipeline, running water service to a house, that might disturb enough ground to require that. Won't be steep slopes with the well and septic because they won't go on steep slopes, I would dare say. So anything that the Health Department's doing is not related to the soil erosion other than they both work with dirt.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. Construction works with slopes. They work with disturbing large areas of ground that requires the soil erosion, which is why I wanted to leave it with construction code and in that department. I think that only makes sense when the Health Department, the only connection between the two is dirt.
John, you're, you're the new construction guru.
Well, we've been looking at this. I, you know, I think one of the things why we've kind of just, quite honestly, we've kind of paused this a little bit because we are awaiting the DEQ audit and to see what changes. But I think what we're, we're looking at is, you can probably argue one way or the other which program it fits best in, but what we're ultimately looking at for is better customer service in a program that is more self-supporting. Right now, the county has been supplementing the soil erosion program and we believe that it has the opportunity to be more self-supporting in its operations. And we're also looking for better customer service. Quite frankly, it hasn't been managed well in its place in construction code. And we want, are trying to reduce the potential for liabilities and problems with that program and we feel that it makes a better sense to be located in environmental health. Is that, is that our, you know, where it's going to end up for certain? There's obviously a lot of variables. Certainly, we're, what's going to come out from the DEQ audit and so forth and, but we're trying to, you know, change the program.
I appreciate your frankness and your willingness to be forthright. And Bonnie, did I make a motion?
Yes, he was ma, and seconded by Kropa to approve the solid...
Okay, I'm going to stand, I'm going to stand with my motion. Commissioner Claus?
So, John, so then if it went under construction code, which is being overseen by you and Jean, you don't feel that you can make changes in customer service and how that department's going to operate?
Well...
Which is why we're moving it to...
You know, I, like I said, we just, in looking at it, we just felt it was a better fit. I mean, we're still digging into this whole issue of trying to improve the operations of construction code. We didn't see it as necessarily a natural fit. And quite honestly, I think one of the things we're going to be doing here is, is really looking towards the, you know, industry in terms of there are opportunities that we're going to be trying to set up for forums to get feedback on, on how the permit processes are going and so forth, inspections and that type of thing. So we will be looking for feedback on an annual basis from the industry so that we're making sure that the service is there. In our initial look at it, it just seemed like it was a place for it to go at this point. And certainly, it's something that we will continue to work with. I mean, we are, we've been really happy with working with Tom and Wendy on this. I think they've been really receptive and interested in trying to provide good service.
And Tom, before you speak, would you introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Tom Buss, Grand Traverse County Health Department. I don't know if this helps the discussion at all, but I did a list serve today of what counties in the state or how many counties have that program under environmental health. And just for your information, it looks like there's around six to seven counties in the state where soil erosion is under environmental health. So I don't know if that helps out at all, but just to give you an idea.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and support. I'm going to ask for a roll call, please, Bonnie.
Claus?
No.
Crawford?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kropa?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Max Power?
Yes. Can I ask a clarification here?
Sure.
Ron mentioned something about a vote. Did you say a five-two voting committee? That was the soil erosion committee?
Ad hoc committee, correct.
And you made a vote on moving soil erosion?
To Health Department.
To the Health Department.
We voted not to.
But staff has, staff has since met and discussed how it would be better, a better fit under environmental health and self-supporting and better customer service.
Why did a committee to rewrite a soil erosion ordinance vote on restructuring?
We just, no, we did not. We changed the ord, the soil erosion ordinance. The reason we wrote it, in my opinion, and Commissioner Claus is certainly free to disagree with me, but my recollection is we wrote it under construction code simply because it had always been there.
So the ordinance includes verbiage that puts it under...
It's verbiage that puts it under construction code.
Okay, so the vote had to do with that because the verbiage would have been changed in the soil erosion ordinance?
And what, yes, and...
And it was, and it was asked if we wanted to change it and it was a five to two vote, no, we didn't want to.
So we have the Soil Erosion Committee and they meet and they discuss soil erosion. And in any of this time, did anyone mention that we were being audited by the DEQ?
No. No one told us.
You all will know how upset I am about this when I say I spoke to the record eagle today. One of the only times that I will speak to the record eagle.
Mark your calendars.
I just got to say, I mean, I, it's not my job to run soil erosion or construction code or Health Department. My job is to vote on a budget and I voted on a budget not knowing that there was potential liability, as Mr. Cooney pointed out, that we could be required to add additional payroll. How is that not something that the County Board of Commissioners should know?
We didn't know. We didn't know.
I just wanted to clarify that during this time you voted in the Soil Erosion Committee, it was never brought up.
Those of us, those of us who are, we're not clairvoyant. No one told us. It is what it is.
Well, we should note that there are other items in this soil erosion ordinance that were also changed. This isn't the only change in the ordinance.
All right. Well, moving on, we have a new business appointment from the ad hoc committee, Building Authority. Commissioner Kropa, would you like to take this one?
Can I read that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
Okay, well, we met and we interviewed both Sally Erickson and a really nice gentleman named Gary Castile. He applied for several appointments here and I think we were all really impressed with Mr. Castile and his interest in serving the community. So many people sit at home and speak, but so few people stand up and want to volunteer and serve on a board. We did choose to reappoint Sally Erickson. The Building Authority meets very rarely, if maybe once a year. And when, including that in our discussions with Mr. Castile, I thought he was interested in serving on a more frequent basis. And Ms. Erickson has been an excellent board member. So with that, I will make the motion to recommend that Grand Traverse County reappoint Sally Erickson to the Building Authority for a six-year term, January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2021.
And I will support and I would like to add that one of the reasons, and we told Mr. Castile this in his interview, he was extraordinarily impressive, but Dean Bott, our former finance director, recommended that we reappoint Sally Erickson primarily because Mr. Bott was leaving the Building Authority and Sally had experience on the Building Authority Board and he felt that that was valuable at this time of his departure. So that was, again, part of our reasoning.
And we certainly invited Mr. Castile to, again, re-apply for any boards that come open in the future. He has a background in the steel industry and all kinds of parts of it, the accounting part, the marketing part, the management part. So he would certainly be a valued and welcomed asset to one of our citizen-led boards.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. This is our second opportunity for public comment. Please.
Lynn Watson, 10460 South Leland Way, Traverse City, 49684. I'd like to talk, take this opportunity to maybe enlighten people a little on Kim Elliott, who was formerly with Resource Recovery. Several years ago, upon the departure of the department head and that department with no notice, Kim, single-handedly held that department together and during that time instituted, in many things, Recycle Smart, the newsletter, and the educational programs that he conducted. I was privileged to work with Kim for a year and a half in that position, when he was in that position. So I just want to let you know that if the educational component slipped in the last few months, it was because he was so terribly overextended. And I would just like to take this opportunity to say thank you to Kim and it's because of him that we had Resource Recovery in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nate?
Under Sheriff Nate Aldridge, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office. There was no thought, creativity, ingenuity, or even courtesy provided to the sheriff before making this decision to defund animal control and move it to the sheriff's office. We found out about it at a board meeting last Wednesday night. And since then, as many of you have, we've received many calls, emails, spoken to the press, spoken to public advocates of animals. It's really disingenuous to force this activity on the sheriff without any discussion whatsoever. Please keep in mind that last year, 2014, we responded to almost 50,000 calls for service, none of which animal control officers could respond to. We have law enforcement responsibilities. Many of these complaints are law enforcement-related, but many of them are not. We don't have the expertise. As these folks have pointed out, we are not trained the way that the animal control officers are trained. There is going to be a significant cost to train 48 deputies in the response to animal control complaints. We don't have the hardware. We don't have the setup for licensers. We don't know what they do. And to assume that we're going to do that by January 1st, it's not going to happen. So we are expected to take on a service that has been provided by the Health Department for as long as I've been here. I've heard many complaints, many from this board, about the way animal control has been handled and managed and serviced. So now that burden shifts to us and we get to do it with $100,000 less. And I'm assuming, I would hope, that you would expect that service to be improved or enhanced at some point. So we have talked to many media this week and this is what is going to happen from our perspective until this situation is resolved. Until we have an opportunity to speak with the prosecutor to learn what we are legally required to do, until we can sit down with Mr. Menzel and the other stakeholders that made this decision and determine what their expectations were, our law enforcement services for animal control complaints is not going to enhance, not one bit, until that meeting occurs. It is irresponsible for us to try to make those moves without knowing what factors were considered in making this decision. I have had contact with Ms. Raffa. She was kind enough to call me this morning. It was a very good conversation about her willingness to help in this process and perhaps set up a committee of public people that are interested to help us in this decision-making process. I would encourage you to welcome that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Commissioner reports. Well, I have, I have one. Commissioner Wheelock had a question regarding Monday's court hearing and we are, I am authorized to tell you, we are proceeding to trial. Okay. The other announcement I have is today in the mail, and I happened to see Dean out in the parking lot at noon, today, Grand Traverse County from GFOA, as they were called, the Government Finance Officers Association, Mr. Bott in Grand Traverse County has once again achieved a certificate of excellence in financial reporting. And I will be passing this on to the administrator and it will be added to our wall down in the lobby area. Anyone else?
I have just a quick thing.
Sure.
I went and bought a membership to the YMCA for my family today and I encourage everyone to do that. It was a very positive experience and when you become a member there, of course, you also help support the Esling Pool. But I just wanted to let everyone know that Grand Traverse County has a mutual agreement with them for wellness and no Grand Traverse County employees have to pay any membership fee, joiner fee.
Ah.
And many other businesses in our community have that same agreement and it's worth asking. And I just encourage people to check out the Y and also remember that there's memberships open for the Y at Esling Pool. I asked the membership director how it was going and they are just under 100 memberships now, which is way ahead of what we had expected since the membership drive hasn't even begun officially, since we haven't finished all of our details with them. So if you have a chance, buy a membership for your family, for the YMCA, and help support our pool as well. And you get waived the fee. So that was...
The joiner fee, not the membership.
The joiner fee. Oh, and we went to the finals for the swing shift in the Stars and supervisor, Peninsula Township Supervisor Pete Coria came in just a very close second in fundraising. He raised 82,200 bucks for the Doherty Foundation and the winner raised 82,700 dollars for Grand Traverse Pavilions.
All right.
And, which is a great thing. And altogether, they raised $278,000 in four nights of dancing for local charities and it was really pretty impressive to see it all come together. So, good job, Pete.
Anything else for the cause? All right. Merry Christmas and we are adjourned.